I'd like to call the Freeburg Community High School District Seventy-Seven Board Meeting to order. Ken, would you call the board?
Mr. Parrish?
Here.
Mrs. Staub?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Henning?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Miller? Mr. Gauk? Ms. Marler?
Here.
For who's rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great justice of all. Do we have any agenda changes this evening?
No.
At this time, we'll open up the floor to public comments. Seeing none. We've all had a chance to look over the consent agenda. Are there any additions or corrections? If none, we do a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening.
Seven.
Second. Let's start through Vicki.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Do we have any committee reports this evening?
Uh, we do not.
Okay. What we've all been waiting for. Student members' reports.
Okay, so, I'm gonna start off with track. So, girls track got seventh at the Triad Two-A Sectionals out of twenty teams. Brianna Chandler, Ella Sebenberger, Caroline Gayen, and Megan Wallamunster qualified for state and will compete this weekend at EIU. Boys track's sectionals tonight at Haron, and then qualifiers for state from tonight will compete next weekend at EIU. For cross-country, Coach Florzin held informational meetings this week for both the boys and girls XC teams to discuss summer workouts, training, and beginning the journey of coming together as a team and family, and they're very excited for a great season. For girls soccer, girls soccer season is over, and they finished with an overall record of eleven to thirteen. They won first place in the Centralia Tournament, and Haley Kynes and Peyton Gynes achieved all sectional honorable mentions. For band and chorus, the band and choir just wrapped up their year and are gearing up for next year. The new director is coming on Monday to meet everyone and talk with them about next year. For color guard, color guard this year consists of seven hard-working individuals, and they will be led by the assistant coach Kelly Hughes for summer practice. For student council, the new student council was just elected, and I think they found out today, so I don't actually know who all is on it yet. But before summer, they are going to have a meeting to decide next school year's homecoming dance theme. For baseball, baseball has a current record of seventeen to twelve and finished second in conference with an eight-to-two record. They are matched up with Waterloo in the Columbia Regional and play Thursday, May twenty-third, at four-thirty in Columbia. The team is working very hard and hoping their success will continue next week. For softball, softball season is going well with more wins than losses, and their current record is fourteen to eleven. And then finally, so, on Monday night, the seniors got to have a party in the senior lot for like the last day of school. The Blues game was projected on the side of one building, and then we had Mario Kart on another building. And there were like games and stuff and snacks, and so everybody had a lot of fun with that to kind of close up the school year. So, that's all I got.
Tradition is born.
It was really fun.
Yeah, that's what Adam said.
It sounded like it went really well, so.
Yeah, the cookout, tailgate, everything.
The village donated, well, willing to donate the screens, dressers, let them plug into their electric over there, so it was definitely a community contribution, and kids planned it all themselves, so.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Nice.
Sure you can fly some, some big shoes.
Yes, they do. Got some good kids there, too.
Okay, let's move on to the principals' report.
Okay, so, we are officially in the end-of-the-year sprint. Final ZAMs, Crumbo collection, last day of seniors, graduation, it goes fast, so we're moving. Last week, we did AP testing. We had forty-six students take it in U.S. history, we had fifty-three take it in government politics. We had three work on their own and take the English language and composition, and then we had one student take an AP bio on their own as well. So, all in all, we had a hundred testers, some kids took multiple tests, so that's quite a good number for us. Really good. Graduation practice is tomorrow, eight-thirty to ten-thirty. Graduation is Sunday at two o'clock PM, so I think the board usually meets at what time, Mr. Braking?
One forty.
One forty, okay. In the conference room.
Ms. Jung, if I could, I hate to interrupt you, just to go back to the testing.
Yes.
They took the test, or you know the results of the test?
They just took the test.
Okay.
So, we don't know any results yet.
Will you follow up on the results when you get them?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, Kinder Nowoski has taken the lead on the graduation planning and has done everything from getting curtains, ordering chairs, she's done a great job. We're gonna put it all together tomorrow with the kids here, but I just want to give a big shout-out to Kinder for managing all that. This is exciting. David Interlee is a community member, and he's had three students attend Freeburg High School. There, his father left him an unfinished midget car he was going to use for the Shriners. The oldest boy took it to the school shop and did some work on it when he was here. The daughter later painted a midget on it, it still needs a lot of work, but he wants to donate that to Freeburg Community High School for the Industrial Arts Club to work on. Mr. Kanaki is gonna take the lead on that and have the students refurbish it, do any welding work, do, you know, work with, you know, get it painted. And that's gonna be a really, I think, cool project once it's all done. If everything's running and working, it can be something we can use in parades and something to represent the school, and I thought that was a really cool contribution. So, looking forward to seeing that, and Matt's gonna go out and meet with Mr. Interlee and look at it and see what needs to be done. So, it's gonna be awesome project. The, kudos to the drama club for the performance of the Brothers Grooms at Taku Lathons, Pitakula Thon, it's a good one. Those kids did a great job, and it was funny, I went on Friday night, I've never seen so many people there. There were a lot of kids there, there were some alumni there, a lot of parents, and those kids just did a really good job, it was fun. They'd be tired of that, David Mers, because he was playing like ten characters at one time, and that was the role, like, he's all over the place, the kids, all of them, just did a great job. The FTHS music department, I know Catherine mentioned them, they have been super busy. They held their band course and jazz concert about two weeks ago, the same weekend as the parade. Did a great job, they held their annual spaghetti dinner and pops concert last Friday. That is a really cool event also, they raised over three thousand dollars, is what they let me know. But in that, it's, the kids get a chance to do individual performances, so whether they sing, whether they do duos, trios, individual music things, and then the chorus did sing in the band. But it's a really, really cool night to see just what talent we have out there, so, kudos to them. We have five seniors also preparing to sing the National Anthem at graduation. Ian Garland, Blake Hatter, Rachel Leichert, Sidney Stone, and Gabby Rollers, so you'll get to hear them on Sunday. The honors banquet also was an amazing night, it's probably one of my favorite nights of the entire school year. I mean, just to see the accomplishment of all these students and where they're going, what they're doing, what they've accomplished, and they've worked really hard, and it's a great night of celebration. I have two things to show you tonight, so, this is kind of our fine arts night a little bit here. When you get a chance at a break, all of these pictures here are student art projects. Marler's got one, hers is the first one there. And some of them are photography, drawing, sketches, paint, artwork, so when you get a chance, kind of check those out. So, just to give you some information on what the kids did this year. The following students are gonna have art displayed at the Art on the Square this weekend, so if you get a chance to get out there and you go to the student art section. We have Olivia Lester, Catherine Marler, Becca Letty, Gray Shaw, Molly Twinhovel, Kaylee Hermans, Ethan Gardner, Maggie Blankenship, Kayla Rinnaker, Bridget King, Alexis Fogel, Eva Weber, and Christian Garrity. This year, students have won several awards throughout the year. Eva Weber took first place at the Congressional Art Competition, I think we had that a couple of weeks ago. So, her trip to Washington DC is coming up, where she's gonna go out and they're gonna do a celebration, they're gonna keep her artwork out in Cannon Hall for the year. Catherine Marker, Marler, sorry about that, also had an HM Congressional Art Competition winner. Maggie Blankenship, Senator Schimpf High School Art Competition winner, and Catherine again for Senator Schimpf's High School Art Competition. Special projects completed this year, they repainted the ramp around the concession stand, if you haven't had a chance to check that out. Updated a few paintings in the bathrooms. Sidewalk chalk competition, Art Smarts program, and then if you're walking through the halls and you see stripes on the walls and new things painted, and just have really, you know, added some school spirit and lightened up the building. So, congratulations to the art department on a very busy and successful year. The other thing I have for you tonight, and this is from Mr. Kanaki, who was our first-year teacher that took over the welding program. And these are some of the projects that his class did this year. Some of our students. Their metalwork projects. This one's actually here for you. The kids loved doing those things, too. They learned a lot, had a great time. Also, when you get a chance at the break, if you check out, there's a large display of some of the art metalwork that they've done this year. And then the fire pit that they did is over here on the floor. Mr. Kanaki and I have been talking, he thinks he wants to raffle that off or auction and have the, you know, proceeds go to the industrial arts, so him and I are gonna talk about what to do. The kids all helped make that, it's really cool, so when you get a chance at the break, just kind of take a look and see what's up there. So, he's had just a really great year as well, and again, we just have a lot of talented kids, so, thank you.
Wonderful. Are there any other questions for Jill this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, first thing is, I have in mind is legislative update, there are three pieces of legislation I wanted to kind of point out. The first I had written in the board memo, there is a Senate Joint Resolution Amendment that Pritzker is trying to push through, it's for his graduated income tax. One thing that concerns most school districts is it also includes a mandatory PTAL. So, that's where each district would be considered a PTAL district, which limits their ability to increase their revenue through the levy process. But that is ongoing, there was, I just got an update today from the ROE. There are two pieces of legislation that had a second reading today. The first is a minimum teacher salary, and I will tell you that that does include TRS, so with our current teacher salary, it's not an issue, we're already over the minimum. But the one that could be interesting is a mandated district consolidation bill where they want to eliminate twenty-five percent of the school districts in the state. So, they will go through and do a study, decide which districts, and then they will basically force it to be on the referendum for the local people to vote. So, the locals still have a vote in it, but, so that could be interesting. So, we'll see how that goes. I asked III Conference if you think you want to go to that, I highly recommend it, I think it's probably the best training for board members. Please let Kinder know, once we do that, or once we get the program, I sent out the link to it, keep an eye on that. We should get, the program should be more definitive at the beginning of June, and that way we can register, I know the one we registered, and I won't be the meeting next time. If you want to go to something on Friday, I'm not gonna stop you. But there were some really good sessions, we went on a safety session last year, it was really good. So, I encourage board members to do that, and let Kinder know, we want to get our reservations in in early June so we can get the hotel we'd like. Ms. Jung mentioned the graduation's two o'clock on Sunday. If you would be in the conference room at one forty, and then, most of you know how this works, Mr. Parrish will hand out diplomas, but if you have somebody you want to hand it out to, just work it out with him. And.
No, I.
Angie's got her thirty-seven, she's gonna hand out, so whatever you guys want to do.
You just, I just come up behind you, don't hurt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let them know, because of, you know, scare them.
Yeah, one of them.
Sorry. And then, I have the pleasure of presenting this plaque to our student board member, Ms. Marler. If you would please rise. So, this just says, "From the Freeburg Community High School District Seventy-Seven, presented by the Board of Education, to Ms. Catherine Marler, student member of the Board of Education for 2018-19, in appreciation of the dedicated service to the student, staff, and communities of Freeburg Community High School District Seventy-Seven."
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all I have. Any questions or comments? Want to follow up?
You went to the phone.
Great. Yes.
Not for the night, but to peek at both and see, which we have outstanding, you know, people that are graduating for the next year.
Okay.
See how, where we're at on that.
And I. Right, I will tell you, it's been greatly reduced.
I actually have a copy of it in the office, so I can get that if you want to see tonight as well.
Yeah.
So.
Are there any students that aren't?
Um, I don't think so.
Not because of, we have a few students that are choosing not to walk, not because of things aren't taken care of at night.
All right, let's move on to old business.
The board policy update, I did receive a draft copy of the board policy update from the ISB. He will contact me, Mr. Ferguson will contact me and set up, or try to set up those dates. I think Mr. Parrish has put in committee assignments.
Put up everybody today.
Okay, and so, I'll work with, and there's only two on that committee, so I'll work with them to, on their schedule, to sit down. Mr. Boyd will come in, and it'll be, we paid for three meetings, hopefully we'll get all our work done in three meetings. Basically, what we're doing is we're taking the entire board packet, and we are looking at it, reviewing it, and we will bring a brand-new board packet for approval. Probably sometime mid-fall, I'm assuming, October, November, it'll take a little bit to get this all done. So, pretty excited about that.
Item B?
Ag building renovation is moving along. They have most of the rough work done on the inside, all the plumbing has been inspected and passed, all the framing on the inside's done. I have been out there the last couple of days, we've been doing interviews, but they have the, it's a, whatever the product is that goes under the stucco-like product that's gonna go to the outside, that's up on most of the exterior walls. The roof is supposed to get started the end of this month. And then the only issue that I've mentioned to you guys before is this, the plumbing, we have to replace the plumbing line from the building all the way to the sewer, so it's about a twelve-thousand-dollar additional cost. We did, through this process, and I'm not sure if I mentioned this, we probably have gone through with conversations between the contractor and the architect and have reduced and changed some things that will probably reduce the price by about three or four thousand dollars. So, a little bit with plumbing fixtures, there was a couple of things that we've decided that we didn't really need this, and so we go in this direction. There's been a couple of changes, but all of them are coming in either at the same price or less. So, it's moving forward, and I think it should be ready to go.
My question around that, so, we paid for the camera, or the notes, we paid for the camera to inspect the pipe.
Right.
We just need to track that with the project, with the project costs.
Well, and we, there'd be other costs that we didn't include in the project, so there's things that Jeff's doing, he's putting up the cameras. The, once he gets the Wi-Fi in, he's doing some of that work, so we'll put it all together.
I'm just taking it as a contingency that, that's the only reason I'm saying, correct it that way.
Well, it's not, it wasn't part of the bid, so that's gonna be separate. That is costing.
He does the rest of that work, but we're doing it. As an overall project, I just think you should capture all the costs.
Well, we will, no, I will do that, absolutely, right. Right.
That's all we did, that's all.
Yep.
Okay, item C.
Kind of an update on the sale of the Towers property. Working, our lawyers are working with their lawyers to finalize the sales documents for that. I have inspection scheduled for Tuesday, we're gonna bring our folks in, take a look at it, make sure there isn't anything going on. We did meet with BASK last week, they are interested in renting the office space. Talked with the manager, Jeff, the manager over at Sentinel, and they are fine with us using that space. I don't know an exact number, because it all has to do with the number of students and the type of students and how that's calculated to the state. But the building, or the room that we have right now, we bring in an additional thirty thousand, so I'm anticipating it'll be somewhere around there that we'll be able to bring in and rent. There is a separate room, it's, right now, it's their break room, and BASK has expressed an interest in using that room as well after Sentinel leaves. And so, that would be nice, they'll be able to utilize that room, and that will also generate some additional revenue, so, that's moving forward. I'm still anticipating that we would have a June thirtieth or somewhere around there closing.
And you renegotiated the lease?
Sat down with Sentinel, and basically, we're just gonna extend that lease, we're looking at, they would like to have that lease through March first, so it's a little bit longer than we thought. The only thing there is we will have to pay, taxes will have to be paid on the property, but Sentinel is paying those taxes, that's how they had their lease already set up, they'll just continue it. So, that'll be, it's about an eight-thousand-dollar revenue that'll come in each month from Sentinel through March.
Any questions or comments on this one?
Okay, that's why I wanted to say.
Yep.
Yep.
Item D.
We met with representatives from OPA last week, Diane and I sat down to kind of go through numbers to make sure their numbers are matching up with our numbers. Overall, I've been very happy with what we've gotten from OPA. I think this year, especially with the personnel switching, has greatly enhanced how well that's flowing. Last year, the numbers showed that we lost about six thousand dollars in the kitchen. Do you want to point out, or have you recall that in not-so-recent history, we were losing anywhere from thirty to seventy thousand dollars a year in the kitchen? This year, we're anticipating to have about a three or five-thousand-dollar revenue, that comes in as positive revenue, and then the following year, you know, they're anticipating it should go up a little bit more. So, we sat down, we talked about the prices of the lunch, the prices of the à la carte, and one of the issues with the à la carte, and I'm gonna get in trouble if I start this conversation and not understand it completely, but but that there is a percentage that the state requires us pay, and the percentage that's in the contract don't match up. And so, this year, there was a little bit of a loss because of that, so what they're gonna do is they're gonna change their number, and so it's gonna even that out, which actually makes it a break-even for us. So, that's part of the reason why we should see a little bit higher revenue next year than we saw this year, because of the change in that.
Any questions?
Just a couple of comments, do you have a mechanism to survey the students on their, on their?
We could, we could send a survey out.
I would be interested to have their input, and you can, you could be involved, or your replacement could be involved, on just a satisfaction survey, their desired. No.
Oh, Kevin. Dennis, I really think this is the closest.
But just, I'd like to know what the students think, I mean, they all made light of the chicken fritter thing Wednesday, or whatever that is. But, in that, and what's your opinion on the quantity that is served? Or, I don't know about other parents, but my kid eats between seven and ten dollars a day here, because he's getting two entrees, two desserts, and everything. So, if kids are having to double up in order to get what they, what they'd like to eat, then, I mean, it could just be a boy that eats everything, but.
And I have one of those.
I have a girl that does it.
Catherine, do you get two entrees?
I've never bought salads, actually, so, I can't really help on this.
Part of that is the requirements on what they're allowed to serve, how much they're allowed to serve, I mean, like, we got rid of, you know, the fries.
Sure.
Because we're allowed to do that, we had to go to a whole week, or whatever it is, and so that was, you know, each time we make a change, you know, anytime, you know, you have kids, you go healthier, at least my kids are like this, that there seems to be a resistance, so. Mr. Henning's in there every day, I don't know if he wants to throw his two cents in.
No, I think, I tell you what's funny, is there's one boy in there that fills his tray, I guess, while he buys the salad, and every day, it's piled up and puts all the fixings on it. I said, man, you in the hell is either I've ever seen, I even took a picture of him, I said, I've never seen anybody eat that much salad in one day. Couple of kids complain that they don't like a certain item that they're getting a tray for, and are a couple of items that they could substitute, you know, a couple of times, they've been unhappy, and been a few disciplinary actions taken and stuff like that. But, most of the food they serve, it's, varies, you know, there's all kinds of, I could recognize some stuff from garage chicken and everything like that. They got, they have a great variety, I should say, of foods. I notice a lot of food, kids get up in line and get the extra stuff with cheese and things like that in mind, you know.
Well, there may already be a method of laws for them to have input.
But we can look at, I mean, so, they give us the number of lunches, so, two years ago, I think, and I'm guessing it, is we based the number of lunches that we were selling at somewhere around a hundred and ninety a day. Last year, we were over two hundred, two hundred and five, two hundred and seven, two ten, or something like that. This year, we're down in the hundred-nineties again, and so I asked about that, and they said, that's very typical of high schools, the first year, it's new, that kids are trying it, and then, you know, once they're done, they, you know, they know what they want, and if they don't want that, they bring their lunch. So, one of the things they're trying to do is they're trying to, don't tell anybody this, they're trying to entice kids by putting things on the à la carte, so they did that with the chicken, and the kids really liked the chicken strips, so then they created the chicken and waffles lunch, which is a popular lunch where the kids will then want to go. So, they're trying to do that, so they, you know, because the à la carte, we don't get the reimbursements that we do on the regular lunch. So, they, you know, they can get the kids to look at that, an item that may be appealing on the à la carte, and then they translate that into a meal, then that helps with the numbers on our end.
Has the faculty numbers increased at all?
No.
No?
No, and I, they've tried, they just, they want to.
Subs eat in there.
Yeah, but they want.
You eat in there.
I mean, I eat there fairly often, but, no, I mean, the teachers just want to go and do their own thing, they want to have their half an hour off and go eat their lunch, and so. And we've had conversations, and Opus tried different things, they give coupons, try this, try this, it's just, high school's different than grade school. Our numbers are just not gonna be, the participation numbers just aren't gonna be like the art.
Curiosity.
Okay, let's move on to new business.
The first item is to look at a possible move for health insurance, we've been with the Egyptian Trust for, I don't know how many years, but quite a few years, the cost of the Egyptian Trust has gone up. Some of the difficulties in dealing with insurance companies has gotten a little bit worse. So, reached out to a company named Cornerstone Insurance Group, they're a brokerage firm, and they have put together a proposal. I know Angie and Mr. Haas were at that presentation. Basically, what they're going to give us is essentially, I say essentially, it's not, you know, point-for-point, the exact same insurance, the exact same coverage, but essentially, it covers the same as what we've covered overall. But with a substantial decrease in our expenses, well over a hundred thousand dollars, and that includes a buyout that we would have to have with the Egyptian Trust of almost fifty thousand dollars. It is capped at five percent for the next year, our insurance over the last three years averaged five percent, so we can save quite a bit of money, and even if with the increases, it would take us about three years to get back to where we are now. So, I think it's a very good deal, the customer service that they talked about, and the districts that Old Smith that uses them, it's wonderful, you just make a phone call up to the office and. a phone call up to the office and tell them the issue that you're having, and they take care of it. So it kind of eliminates us having to call an eight-hundred number or whatever for the insurance. And I think it's a very good deal. I have not had any teachers, we did the presentation, we invited teachers. I asked them to reach out to the teachers and seek me out if they had any questions. I haven't had anybody come to me and ask me about it or have any complaints. I had a couple of people ask me about the insurance. I kind of gave them this little spiel. So the way the contract reads, it's the district's, the board's decision. This is a time-sensitive. Our turnover on the insurance is September first. That's when our insurance flips over from one year to the next. So we have to give them at least a thirty-day notice or sixty-day notice, I can't remember. We have to have it done by July first. So I'd like to get it done at this meeting. And then what'll happen is Cornerstone will then come in and they will pass out information to all, they'll get all the information from Diane of all who've covered. And they will come in at the beginning of the year, sit down with the teachers, explain some of the changes that are gonna be made. It's still gonna be Blue Cross Blue Shield. So we're basically going from the same insurance company to the same insurance company. So I don't know those that were at the meeting, if you had anything else.
Angie?
I thought it was a great deal, especially with the savings in the district. I mean, that leaves us open for, and not that I'm saying we need it, but, and it comes out of a different fund anyway, but a hundred thousand dollars, that's another two, two and a half teachers possibly salaries we could cover and not have to worry about.
Same fund.
The same fund. So there you go. We're extending the egg fund a little bit longer. And I don't want to say negatives about it. I thought it was a great deal. Presentation was very good. And the customer service stuff, I don't know if anybody's here decided to deal with fighting with the insurance to cover stuff. Well, apparently, some of our teachers have been having issues with that. They don't have to fight with the insurance to cover it. They talked to this intermediary, and they do all the fighting for them. They just say, "Here's what I have. I thought this was covered." And then they go, they go and do all that fighting and stuff for the teachers, which I think is an exceptional benefit for anybody, because they're the experts on insurance. And I don't know about you, but I wouldn't even know what to do about fighting an insurance company and making sure they're covered when they are supposed to.
I had the same impression. It was beneficial for, almost every teacher had some savings. The family wasn't, the family, the teachers that were covering their entire family wasn't a great savings, but it was a savings over what they're currently paying. The individual teacher was, that just was covering themselves, was a much greater savings. All the copays, all the, everything was within a hundred dollars of the same level that they're getting now. So nobody can, nobody can, could accuse us of, to save money, we're cutting their insurance. Nothing could be further from the truth. It's the same group. It's practically line for line, the same. One might beat the other by a hundred dollars or have a little higher copay or a little less copay, but the coverage is essentially the same for all purposes. Having that local number that you can call instead of a national one-eight-hundred number that you gotta wait for, that was huge. I'm impressed by it.
Gary, you have something?
I was gonna say, who usually takes care, Diane or Karen?
Poor Diane gets all those questions.
Oh, my gosh, you know, I mean, she's calling in. I know, I've been in there a couple times. It's insurance, it's insurance. What's the fear of a heck of a lot more doing the school business and stuff? And how long is it gonna take us? We pay about fifty grand. We're still gonna make what, fifty grand that first year?
A hundred.
It'll be over a hundred savings.
Even though after fifteen, right.
Right.
Okay.
Basically, basically, I feel.
Yeah.
I also talked to Diane at that meeting. She said this is, for her, is going to be a tremendous help with her. It'll save her hours here at work with insurance, dealing with insurance stuff. So it will also help in that area.
Is this a year-to-year?
It is. So that was one of the things, that the only really negative is they will bid this insurance out on a yearly basis. So there could be the chance that you could have a different insurance company. I know that's kind of a pain. But the Egyptian Trust, and we had no choice in it, on March first changed from whatever it was to Blue Cross Blue Shield. So, you know, we didn't have a choice. We can, you know, we can bid this out, and we can, if we choose to keep that same insurance, we can keep that same insurance. It doesn't, we don't have to necessarily take the low bid when we're looking at the insurance. So we have a lot more control over it. We're not in control of the Egyptian Trust. The big schools around here are. So, I mean, this puts the control over what insurance we have in our hands, which I also think is a benefit.
Okay. So the first year, we're gonna save eighteen percent. We'll roughly save a hundred and fifty thousand. We'll pay forty-nine thousand to get out of the Egyptian Trust.
Somewhere around there, once they get to...
Then there's a cap increase of five percent on the second year. But the third year, there's nothing as far as...
Right.
So we'll just have to see at that time.
Right.
Right now, it's well worth it.
Smithson did this. Smithson has saved money each of the last couple of years on their insurance. So they bid it out, and insurance is such a competitive field that they're going back and saving money.
Yep.
I'm making a motion to withdraw from the Egyptian and lose the Cornerstone.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Henning, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item B.
I've been working on talking to some copiers. In your packet is a spreadsheet that has a breakdown of the different proposals. Just to kind of give you a little background, we've got two copiers in our office. I put in there over two million. I think it's a lot more than that. We're in the fourth year of a five-year lease with Daycom. Both the machines that we purchased are, were used with probably two to three hundred thousand copies on it at the time. We're currently paying about eighteen hundred dollars a month, eighteen-ten to be exact, is what we pay for our copier use. So went out and talked to three different companies, Daycom, Americom, and then a company called Enterprise Services and Solutions, and got bids on copier leases. So some of the information, so the manufacturer's in there, the manufacturer from Daycom is a Rico. The different speeds of the machines or the different proposals right now. I believe we have a seventy-five per minute, or per-page machine in the office, and then a sixty-five per page machine in the office, I think. I don't know that for a fact, but it's pretty close to that. We have nine months left on our lease. So one of the factors is if we were going to walk away from the lease, we would be responsible for the remaining part of that lease. So when I talked with Daycom, they gave me three different proposals. Two seventy-five-minute machine, or seventy-five-page per minute machines, or a seventy-five and a sixty-five. Or they have a used machine that's a ninety-five page per minute, but it only has a hundred and eighty-three thousand copies on it. So it's a pretty new machine, hasn't had a lot of use. What I'm told is the quicker the machine, the bigger the motor, the longer it should last. All these proposals do include maintenance along with it, at no cost. Well, no additional cost. You're paying for the maintenance in there. Americom had two different proposals. Both of these are new, seventy-page per minute. And then the second one just has more options on it. It had a book, what is it, a booklet-making option, is that right? So it had a booklet, so we could make a booklet. So like Kendra made a booklet for the graduation. And then the last one was Canon. And so their monthly lease is quite a bit less, but Canon did not offer much of a buyout. So when you add the buyout cost in there, the overall cost, the better deal, and the one that I'm recommending, is option three from Daycom. I'm not concerned about that machine having that many copies on it. They're gonna, you know, if there is any issues, they will repair it or they will replace it if it is a repair. The other thing that Daycom mentioned is that if we do get into trouble, and we've been with Daycom for quite a long time, so they wanna keep us as a customer, is they'll bring a third machine in in here and just put it someplace if we need it. If we're running into having issues, they will bring it. And of course, it'll probably be a used machine and bring it in, but they will bring it in. He said, "We'll leave it here if we need to leave it here." But they're willing to do basically what it takes to make sure that we have machines that work. So Kendra's the one that really kind of handles all the maintenance. Not the maintenance, she calls the maintenance. I mean, she does a lot, but she doesn't...
Actually fits in.
Yeah. But she'll make a phone call, and Daycom is really good about getting here. The reason we're looking at this is we have, I don't know, what do we average in a couple of weeks, probably, service calls are did for a while?
Anywhere between one to two.
Yeah. So we're getting to the point where the machines are just getting more out. The life expectancy of these, the bigger machines are supposed to be about three million to three million five for the number of copies it could make. So it works out to be actually a little bit cheaper overall cost. I'd like to go with the Daycom and approve the bid that they gave us.
Any questions?
I'm just gonna recommend, that looks like a best to me, too.
I don't want to bet the price. How can it seem as less than what we're paying the partner?
One of the things that was in the other contract is we were able to make up to a hundred thousand copies a month. We've reduced that to eighty thousand because we're averaging about seven, eight, or seventy-nine thousand now. So they've reduced the number of copies we're allowed to make. So what happens is we go over, there's an overscharge. It's like half a cent a copy is the overscharge. So by reducing that, they're cutting their, you know, their margins a lot closer. So that's one of the big. I was shocked when they came in. So I met with these guys individually. The first guy came in and, you know, I forget the, it was the top one at thousand sixty-six or whatever that was. And when he said that, and I knew that the cost was eighteen hundred now, I thought, "What the heck?" And so I was expecting these others to come in, but they all came in close.
I'd say that's a call.
Are they all the same amount of costs?
So we have a lease through, so we signed a lease saying we will pay eighteen-ten every month for sixty months.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, we've signed a contract. So that goes through February. So between now and February, we still have to pay that cost. And then there's a restocking or a machine return charge of like four hundred and fifty dollars. Now Americom came in and said, "We'll cover it all. We'll cover those costs. There will be no, you don't have to pay for any of that." But when the Canon people came in, they only offered a thousand dollars.
And Daycom just said that they let you out?
Sure. Yeah, they're gonna, they're keeping our business. So we'll just start a brand-new contract. There won't be any costs. They'll come in and replace the machines. We're gonna wait until the school year's out. Not quite. It's a pretty huge reduction.
There's no nuisance clause in the contract, though, if your machine is broken down?
I don't, you know, there probably is something like that. I mean, our contract is a one-page basic sales sheet with a bunch of small print, but...
Because if you get eleven, you're not gonna want to deal with it.
Well, we've had it for four years. So I'm sure we're past the time for eleven.
They might. We're talking about the new one.
Yeah. Well, I'm saying, anything useful you get in a lease like that, if you don't have any way to get help, if you got a bad one...
Well, they repair it. I mean, if there's something, it should, they come in, they repair it.
But it's down till they do. It's down till they do. It's down till they do. The only thing that I would say, and I wouldn't suggest that I'm agreeing with Gary, but the only advantage I see to the number one is I would say when you get two exact models and same, so it might be easier. I don't know if there'd be parts on site or not, but...
They're...
Normally, they do.
As far as the parts?
Yeah.
Well, they'll, so they'll leave, they leave toner and they leave staples. And so when we need toner, we put the toner in. When we need staples, we put new staples in. Whenever we need new one, Kendra calls, they send that stuff to us. So we have those, that's really the only two consumable things that are, that we have in there that we could mess with. As far as the controls, the controls are kind of identical. They're pretty similar. So the training part shouldn't, I mean, if you go from the copier in the office to the copier in the teacher's lounge, you're not gonna have to have a whole nother system. They're basically the same copier, it's just a bigger motor and it's faster.
Ninety-five's about the fastest there is. Anyway, as far as pages per minute.
It's, yeah.
Do the teachers have a code that they punch in, so you know what certain classes use more than others?
I mean, they, we do not use one now.
We, we're doing a new lease for our copier out there at work, and the gentleman who came in is really pushing that, to have a code, because the one company that had one at, the copies had gone through the roof. Well, the cleaning people were coming in at night and printing out their flyers for whatever else was going on. So that's, that's how they finally caught it, because they're like, "We're not making this many copies and paying penalties for going over."
So we have, all these machines have the ability to do that.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion at this time? Gary?
I'll make the motion. I'll go with the third proposal down there.
Canon, proposal number three. Do we have a second?
Second.
Let's pass the second. Vicky will start with you.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Move on to item C.
This is the first reading of the amended budget Diane put together. It was shared in your packet. I apologize, I didn't get a copy of it in your folder. I'm looking for it now. But the rea, there's basically three reasons that we have to amend the budget. The first one is we adjusted the tort levy after the budget was amended, and the amount we increased in the tort levy put us over the limit that we're allowed to make changes in revenue. So that causes, have to do that. Plus, we didn't have the towers property purchase in there, and we didn't have the ag center in there. So we've basically, Diane has just gone through it and updated all that. Again, this is just the first reading. If you haven't had a chance to look at her explanation, but that's the only funds that are really, have been adjusted. And I know there's been questions about some other funds, and when we're over this amount, that amount. A lot of it has to do with, we're still trying to get the budget set up properly so that the money that we think's coming out of this line item is, and that, you know, so that we can make sure we're matching all those things up. It's just a process that Diane's been working through over the last couple of years.
Any questions or comments at this time? Okay, we need a motion to approve the first reading of the amended fiscal year nineteen budget.
So...
Second.
Mr. Reynolds, second. Mr. Ross, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item D.
This has been talked about for a few years. Last year, we put it off because our, there was a switch in the auditors. Mr. Ballmer moved from his old firm to a new firm, and just to keep going with Mr. Ballmer, we just signed an agreement. It is kind of looked upon favorably to solicit bids for auditors every so often, just to have the possibility, at least the chance to have other eyes look at it. Not that I think that Mr. Ballmer, and I would be more than happy to keep Mr. Ballmer if that's who gets the low bid, but I, I think it would be appropriate to go ahead and solicit bids for audit work for fiscal year nineteen.
Questions or comments? Need a motion to move? Motion, Mr. Reynolds?
Second.
Angela, we'll start with you.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item E.
The next is the architect and attorney services bidding. I would rather not go out and solicit bids. Two reasons. One, I'm very happy with both the architect and our attorney. I have a very good relationship with both. I, you know, I have cell phones, I make phone calls, they call me back. It's worked out well. I did kind of get a number, this is in your packet as well, to see what we've spent on attorneys and the architect. One of the things you'll notice is sixteen-seventeen, it looks like it's been about four thousand dollars for FGM, and then it jumped way up to forty-three and then sixty-two. And those are directly related to the projects we've been doing. And so we basically pay, we pay for them to do inspections, which is a yearly cost, and then we pay them percentage of the job. So they get whatever it is, ten percent, or I think it's somewhere around there, which is pretty standard. So again, it's hard to kind of judge that, is our cost going up? Well, it's really, percentage-wise, it's about the same cost as we've been spending. The lawyer, sixteen-seventeen, it was... The, the lawyer, um, sixteen seventeen, it was twenty-seven thousand last year, jumped up to thirty-three. Uh, and this year we've only spent about twelve thousand dollars on lawyers. I don't know if that's good or bad, the lawyer will probably tell me I need to call more often, but, um, again, I know Jill and I have sat down on conference calls, uh, with our lawyers, with Mary and, uh, I mean, as soon as we have questions, we have the answers, we go to their law conferences. Uh, I feel very good, we're not required by law to bid these out, so I would rather not. I'd rather keep these guys. So that's my two cents.
Questions or comments? We need a.
We don't need to do it.
No, unless they want to change. What's with I, has anybody wanna make a change? I think everybody's okay. Item F.
Uh, this is the annual business of, of appointing the Basque Governing Board Designee. Uh, Mrs. Staub was, uh, that person last year, and, and is it a monthly or quarterly?
Quarterly.
Quarterly, uh, where you go to Basque. I go to the monthly meetings and then, um, Vicky actually sits on the, uh, the big board and, uh, makes the, the big decisions. So, uh, unless somebody wants to arm wrestle Vicky for this, I think she's graciously accepted.
Again, I'd be, I'd like to move to appoint Victoria Staub as FCHS's Basque Governing Board Designee for two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty school year. Hanning, please do it for the second. All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Uh, we'll move on to the board correspondence.
Yes, I wanted to, uh, mention a letter we would receive from Mr. Mark, uh, Shiper. I don't know if I'm saying that right, if anybody knows his name. Uh, he is one of the gentlemen that worked the, uh, prompt. Uh, he was incredibly complimentary of Mrs. Adrian's work that night, how organized she was. In addition, um, of, of the, the students, the juniors, sophomore, I guess freshman too, for, yeah, student council members that worked, uh, he said he was just so impressed with the work they did. And I do wanna mention those, uh, student council members that were there with Sam Marler, uh, Tino Borha, Abby Benedict, Brooke Neighbors, Carmen Stein and Jackson Dirk. So they, uh, he couldn't have, the, the letter wasn't, couldn't have been nicer. Uh, so I'm really proud of Mrs. Adrian's work and her leadership with this group of kids and he said they basically had that place cleaned in about a half an hour or so. So that was awesome. So, wanted to share that and thank you for the letter.
Wonderful, wonderful. Hey, do we have any agenda items at this time?
We do not.
Do we have a reason to go into closed session?
We do, we have some personnel issues to talk about.
Okay, we have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion.
Rowan?
Second.
Starting with Mike.
Aye.
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 Motion passes, we're now in closed sessions, thank you everyone for coming this evening.
All right, uh, move to appoint Ms. Justice Dickey as the Student Board Member for the Board of Education for the nineteen-twenty school year.
So moved.
Second.
Gary, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Uh, move to hire Matt Burke as a social studies teacher for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
So moved.
Second.
Dennis?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Move to accept the resignation of Mr. Scott Nipper as business teacher effective at the end of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year.
Mr. Hanning? Motion makes the motion.
Second.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Move to hire Mr. Andrew Morgan as the academic challenge coach for the nineteen-twenty school year.
So moved.
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Move to appoint Mr. Jeff Altz, position of FCHS Director of Technology Instruction for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Move to have Ky, uh, move to approve Kyle Peckert as volunteer volleyball coach for the nineteen-twenty school year.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
And then real quick before we adjourn, I, I'm, I'm interested in, in forming a, uh, putting together a building grounds committee meeting. Doesn't have to be done within the next month or so, but sometimes this summer, maybe sit down and, uh, we can maybe even walk over.
I wanna do the ag building while we're doing it.
Okay, so, we'll, we'll, we probably just tour both, we're still going, we're okay.
And we'll go back for later.
Yeah, so we can kinda walk and then really talk about what our uses are gonna be. Uh, I've got a couple other ideas I'd like to kinda throw out there, um, about, um, with the new, uh, property to look at. So, um, I'll just work with you on setting a date.
That's fine, we can set it now if anybody's interested. If anybody's interested in setting a date now.
I'm concerned.
So, um, myself, Dennis and Gary are on the committee, if anybody's lucky, I'm gonna come. It's Thursday's the best day.
Thursday, well, I'm, I'm gonna be gone on a fishing trip all of next week, but the twenty-seventh, eighth and ninth.
I was thinking more in the June time.
Oh, okay.
Give people a little bit of time, give like the, I don't know.
What if, what if we try to do it like at five o'clock on the night of the board meeting?
Is that a tough time, that's only an hour and a half, you should, hour forty-five minutes to get.
Well, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just trying to eliminate the need for people to make these two trips.
Well, we can always schedule, I don't know if you need it, that's fine.
Yeah.
Five o'clock on the next.
On the twentieth?
Twentieth.
It's Angie's.
That's good for me.
Vicky.
I couldn't make it by five o'clock, I could get here as soon as possible, but.
And I'm also available to six if that's.
That's a twenty, June, okay.
The other thing too then, I mean, it's gonna be light out late, but, you know, that way it'll be light, we're not messing around. And then I'll work with them on, I don't know if we'll have keys by the end to Towers or not.
So we're gonna do five o'clock on the twentieth?
Yep.
Building grounds meeting?
I'll just get here as soon as I can.
We'll just, we'll Texas go, let's.
Yeah, we're gonna work out.
You wanna meet in the office and then walk over or meet at the, the bus garage?
We could, we could probably start, we probably need to start someplace to actually start the meeting.
Center, right?
We could just start right at the front door.
Start at the front door, after the meeting.
Yeah, where everybody can just park here and then we could go over.
Go. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, hold us a favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, none, we are adjourned, thank you this afternoon.